Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, October the 26th, 2021. It is 9:00 a.m. We're in the Century Jury Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. Today, we are fortunate to have with us Bishop Jared Schenawark of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, with his beautiful wife here, Amy Jo. I thought it was Tammy Jo, but I thought...
At a different church.
Different. So, we're very pleased to have him, and thank you for being here. Pastor Mike McManus, our safety valve on here, but the bishop has been here before, and he does a great job, and so we're very pleased to have you. So, please join us as Bishop Schenawark gives us the invocation.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to be here this morning. We're grateful for the country we live in, for the great state of Texas, and for being able to be residents of Hood County. We're grateful for the blessings that thou hast bestowed upon us, for the freedoms which we enjoy, for the prosperity that thou hast blessed many of us who live. We're grateful for the good schools that are in our communities. We're grateful for the many good people who serve and help protect our communities. We pray that thou may bless all those who mourn at this time, that they have peace in their hearts. We pray that those who reside at this meeting, they be guided with wisdom, that thou may bless them with inspiration to choose and to make decisions that will be good for the citizens who live here, that they will do all that they can to help protect the freedoms that thou bestows upon us. We're grateful to thee for all our many blessings. We humbly ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen. Would you please join me in a pledge? Our pledge is the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag, please.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Well, we've got some special presentations, and Mr. Donald Kilme here today. There he is. You were hiding an open sight from me there, okay?
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, sir.
Well, thanks, Judge. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. Again, y'all know my annual visit. It's just like a recording. I want to be able to stand in front of you face to face and let you know, on behalf of Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, how much we appreciate the support that you provide, the program here in the county. Without that support, we couldn't have the program we do. We couldn't have the team that we have in Hannah and London here. And I'm excited for them to get started and just ask them on the newsletter to put on their where did they see the program going, and none of that would be possible if it weren't for your support. So, on that newsletter, I always bring every year my annual visit. On the front, I like to highlight something that's going on across all 21 counties in District 8. This year, I highlighted something that Extension was heavily involved in, and it's the COVID-19 effort. I'm not going to go into reading the numbers to you, but I just wanted you to know that Extension played a big part in COVID-19 efforts from the testing sites that the military teams were doing early on. We were the ones bringing supplies to them with the PPEs and that. We were the ones assisting with the STAR requests for PPE deliveries and so forth. We were the ones that were on-call July 4th, 5th, delivering remdesivir and ventilators when hospitals that needed them at that peak time last year. And then, when the governor initiated the opportunity or the chance for childcare providers to participate in the survey, to request PPEs from the state, Extension was the one. Brady was the one that delivered them to the childcare providers here in the county that decided to participate. When the governor provided opportunity for the counties to request PPEs for elections, we were the ones that worked on getting them to the election administrators in all the counties. So, that's what's on the front of that newsletter. The most important part is what the agents do here in the county. And again, remember, that's because of your support. Ag and Natural Resources, London's programming, she's got the opportunity to work with the Master Gardeners. Y'all know, and I always say it, how important those volunteers are to our program, whether it be Ag and Natural Resources, the Master Gardeners, the F Family Community Health, the Master Wellness Volunteers, or our 4-H program with our 4-H volunteers. But you can see the 83 Master Gardeners here in the county, how many hours they contribute, whether it be service projects, whether it be educational programs and so forth. And then, you multiply that 3,000 hours times $23.00 and some cents for a value of a volunteer hour, that equates to a lot of effort on their part and value for them. Tri-County Landowner Development Program that Hood County's involved in with Johnson and Somerville, and you can see the number of participants that across the entire series of programs. And then, you can see future programming for London in the Ag and Natural Resource Program is in water conservation and management, horticulture, and continue the current programs that have been going on in beef cattle and range management and brush control and things like that. Family Community Health, you can see some of the programs that Hannah's been involved in since March. The Childcare Conference that several of my counties around Tarleton go in partners with, Tarleton State University. You can see how many childcare providers that participated, how many clock hours they got in some of the topics at that program. The Walk Across Texas Program that Hannah has going, it's an eight-week program with the number of participants and how many miles they walk. The Better Living for Texans Program, a program that Hannah, as she establishes herself here in the county and work with our low-income SNAP Ed recipients, teaching them nutrition education. You can see there, the Freezer Club, one that she wants to get started in the program, in the county with that program, and it kind of tells you what it is. 4-H Youth Development, we know how important the youth of each county are. You can see the enrollment, how many clubs there are. The livestock projects, whether it be the county show or the major shows that our 4-Hers participate, you can see the numbers there. The Hood County Family Living portion of the county show, how many entries that were entered by our 4-H members. The Healthy Lifestyle Ambassadors, we've got three of them here in the county, and they go participate in a required training. And then, in order to maintain their certification, they have to come back and provide leadership to different programs and assistance to Hannah and her programming. You can see the 4-H contests, whether it be county participation or district participation. The Vet Science Program, you can see four senior-level 4-Hers have completed their fourth year and in their final year of the Vet Tech Program that they can get the Vet Tech certification by their participation. You can see some of the future programming with Curriculum Enrichment, Hatching in the Classroom, Welcome to the Real World, a Financial Literacy Program that we have for school-age youth. Again, none of this would be possible if it wasn't for your support, and you know I always want to be able to see you face to face and let you know how much we appreciate that, and give me an opportunity to brag on my team here in Hood County. Just a reminder, Wednesday, the 3rd, I talked to Commissioner Eagle. If you haven't registered for November 3rd in Waco, I do apologize it having to go back to Waco. It's not as convenient a drive for you this year, but with MCC working with us and that being the center of my district, that's why we have it in Waco. November 3rd, six and three-quarter hours for commissioners. And as always, I'll say the program is good. I put time with the committee into topics, but I guarantee you the lunch. Y'all know I'll guarantee the lunch, so.
You got it.
November 3rd, and if you have not registered and you want to attend, just come on, and it will all be good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want you to know that we feel that it's a mutually beneficial deal between us, and we enjoy working with you, and we love having London and Hannah with us, so.
That's when it works the best.
That's right. It's a very good deal for everybody concerned. Thank you very much for coming down in person. Okay. All right. Next, we're going to have announcing the Hood County Employee Luncheon, scheduled for Thursday, November the 18th, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Ms. Wilburn, I stole a little of your...
No, that's all right. Actually, I was going to ask Commissioner Andrews or Commissioner Cotton, they both serve on the committee, that we meet and organize the employee holiday meal. I was going to ask them if they had anything they wanted to contribute.
No, I think our first meeting went well. I think we've assigned all duties among the people to do the serving, so I think we're ready. We're going to have food and plenty of iced tea and barbecue.
Barbecue.
Our super chef, Chief Smith, will have his barbecue going, and it's always a hit. So, 11:30 to 1:00, I expect everybody to come out, because there'll be some door prizes.
That's correct. Yes, we plan on shooting out the flyer this afternoon, once we've briefed the court on it, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have about the luncheon. Of course, we always ask the support of the court to encourage all department heads and elected officials to allow time for their employees to attend this luncheon, if they choose to.
This is something we do annually. Now, last year, because of COVID, we didn't do it over Thanksgiving. We waited until spring event, but we're back on rotation to...
That's right.
This is our Thanksgiving employee appreciation lunch that we're putting on, so everybody come out and enjoy it.
That's right. All right. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? All right. You're going to steal a question. All right. Now, for service awards. The first is Deborah Young.
Debbie's been behind the scenes as a dispatcher for all these years and serving and protecting the citizens, and I always say that, you know, deputy gets a chance to know what he's getting into most time, because the dispatcher will tell him what he's getting into, but they go from zero to 100 in like, just like that, because they get that phone call, and they got to deal with it, and Debbie does a great job, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. This is for you.
Thank you, sir.
Want to give a speech?
No, sir.
No. I do my talking on the phone.
And our next service award is going to be handed out by our own commissioner, Mr. Jack Wilson, to somebody that we hardly know. No, everybody knows who this is. And you can see, it's Judge Kathy Gwynn. That's two important people right there.
Okay. Kathy started, you know, work for the county in 2006 as a first-line clerk in Judge Filiel's office. Then, she transferred to Judge Huggles' office as office manager, and in 2007, she took her... during that time, she did her training and was certified as a civil clerk, certification and master certified clerk, example. 2014, she ran for office for JP for Precinct 3, was against two other opponents, won, and has been a JP now for seven years. And she now has a total of 15 years in county woman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your years of service.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. If any citizens wish to speak on any agenda item, you must first fill out a public participation form, hand it to Sheriff Deeds, and Sheriff Deeds will then hand it to County Clerk Katie Lang to speak on any agenda item. And I must have it prior to the agenda item being called, because there's a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizens to speak on each agenda item and a maximum of five minutes per citizen. But if there's more than six members, then your time will have to be allocated. So, that's why it's so important for you to fill out the public participation form, and you've got to tell us whether you're for or against, because that's how the time is divided. Okay. So, the next item is the Consent Agenda. Does any of the commissioners wish to pull anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. The next is road ops. Good morning, Mr. Donald.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. We have a request from a property owner to relocate a culvert that goes under Woodcrest, actually to move this one back to the west. We've, during this episode, we've... Commissioner Cotton and I had worked with County Attorney Mills, and in your backup, you've got the recent history of why we're here today.
I think, Mr. Ball, are you here in the audience?
He is, I'd like to judge his phone right here.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'd like, Mr. Ball, why don't you come up and kind of tell us what... how this all happened, and what are you trying to do here?
Just tell the court.
All right. Good morning. Adam Ball, moved here about seven years ago from Amarillo, where it doesn't rain, so we moved here 2014 in the middle of a drought, kind of felt right at home. So, anyway, it started raining, noticed some water next to my driveway coming out from the ground. Noticed there was a tin horn there, culvert draining from the above part of the neighborhood down my driveway through my backyard. Over the last six years, I've been trying to just get something done about the mess of water that rushes next to my house. Several times, had to have some grading work done, just to keep this water out of my garage, away from my house. Lost our backyard fence during one of the heavy rain events. And, you know, I've got a big tackle box. I've thrown every lure I got at these guys, just trying to bump our heads together, get an idea of anything we could do. So, long story short, the last Hail Mary I got, I've offered to pay to get this tin horn moved down to the edge of my property, where the water's still going in the same place. It just doesn't zig all the way across the majority of my property to get to where we're trying to put it, so.
Have you looked at the indemnity contract that we have that we're going to need you to sign, and the two neighbors, the one next to you and across the street, that might be affected by the move of this culvert? Have you got...
I've talked to both neighbors. Both neighbors are in agreeance with me. We've gone out there, had our own little neighborhood powwow, but no, I have not seen it yet.
Okay.
I can get ahold of... Matt have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Matt will have that. And have you seen, I think Don has... Mr. Lenny has put a price, somewhere around $3,000, wasn't it, Don? A quote right in front of me, I don't think. Or maybe I do. I think about 44 man-hours, $1,381.76, and then there'll be equipment hours of $1,832.50 would be what the price to relocate that culvert. Actually, going to abandon one of them and put a new one, isn't that correct, Don?
Yes.
Have you marked the location to where you think you want this new culvert?
Somebody's come out and marked it. It's pretty close.
We've marked it on, Mr. Ball, if you can take a look. That way, you've got plenty of time to look at it. If it's approved, that way we'll know about what we're doing, but...
Okay. All right. Just open it. There's any other court members? You got any questions for Mr. Ball?
Is this water still going on? Are you putting it off onto anybody else's property? Where does the water eventually end?
The water eventually drains to the backside of my property and dumps into what I believe is Rough Creek before it goes into the lake. So, moving the culvert, it only really affects me. The water's still going in the same place. It just cuts it from going across the majority of my property.
But it is still only on your property?
Yes. Just makes it more manageable.
So, the indemnity is just in case that it doesn't work, and it washes out some of its property, or if something happens and it washes out some of your neighbor's properties, instead of coming back to the county, they're going to be coming back to you, Mr. Ball. You understand that, don't you?
Yes, sir.
You may... Amarillo may be looking good at that point, you know? I don't want that to happen, but I'm just warning you. So, okay, well, Matt?
Nothing further from you guys. I'm going to try to make a motion on this, if you want.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the request to relocate the existing drainage culvert underneath and across roadway at 2407 Woodcrest Court, provided that Mr. Ball and the two additional homeowners sign the indemnity and hold harmless release for the county, and in addition, agrees to pay the cost of installing the new culvert and covering the old one. So, that's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the homeowner's request for the relocation of the existing drainage culvert at 2407 Woodcrest Court, based upon the two contingency of paying the cost and getting the indemnity signed by just the homeowner or all three homeowners? All three homeowners? All three?
All three, and then we file them the deed records. Oh, yes. And then, also, and to have this filed with the deed records with the county, so that it stays with that property forever. That would be added to the... my motion to have it filed with the... I guess we're filing with the county, correct? Isn't that...
In the deed.
Yeah. Okay.
And that has been seconded by Commissioner Wilson. So, if there's any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donald.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Ball. Okay. The next is in development. Mr. Clint Head, set a public hearing for the replat of Orchard 14.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. Yep, we have an application for a replat of Orchard 14, Lot 3476R1, 3476R2, and Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for this replat for December 14th, 2021, Commissioners' Court.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for the replat of Orchard 14, Lots 3476R1 and 3476R2, for December 14th, 2021.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to set a public hearing for December the 14th of 2021 for the Orchard 14, appropriate lot, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item.
We have a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan for 1862 Ranch.
Okay. We are now going to convene into a public hearing at 9:26 a.m. Okay.
This property is located at 9421 Rocky Branch Highway, La Pan, Texas, and proposes to create 11 single-family lots. The proposed concept plan is located in Road Corridor District and Precinct 1, and was initially proposed to be served by Wells when it was submitted. After addressing the comments, the staff's comments, the concept plan showed it will be possibly served by La Pan Water and Onsite Sewage Facilities. The concept plan proposed to construct 2,341.97 linear feet of one-and-a-half-inch asphalt coarse penetration streets with two cul-de-sacs. The largest residential lot is 5.48 acres, and the smallest is 2.00 acres. The developer is proposing to install a resupply pond for fire protection, as described in Section 2, Section 8.5 of the Development Regulations. Development's received a copy of the text dot permit. All comments have been addressed. There is one variance associated with this concept plan. The variance is to Section 2, Section 6.4C, concerning a street longer than 600 feet in and in cul-de-sac. The proposed Ranch 1862 weighs 1,071.48 feet from the intersection to the cul-de-sac. The variance would be to allow the street to be 471.48 feet longer to the cul-de-sac than the 600-foot required by the regulations. The developer is proposing to build the larger cul-de-sac, described in Section 1 of the Development Permit Regulations, Section 6.43D, which requires the cul-de-sac diameter be 100-foot and the right-of-way be 120-foot in diameter, when there is not going to be a fire hydrant installed. Due to the configuration, density, and sizing of the lot, staffs have no objection to the variance. All comments have been addressed. If the court chooses to grant the variance, staff recommends approval of the concept plan as presented.
Is there any one here to comment or discuss or consider the concept plan? What is your recommendation on it, on the variance?
It's 400 and something feet, and there's only just a couple of lots that are going to be down there, and it's less than one we've approved before, so staff has no objection to the variance.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court now at 11:30 a.m. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the concept plan of 1862 Ranch with the allowing the variance as requested.
Second?
Motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve and allow the variance of the concept plan of 1862 Ranch, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Good judge, Mr. Head. Okay, financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For today's court, we have two fiscal years that we are paying. Fiscal year 2021, $96,554.33. Fiscal year 2022, $287,793.18. Our office has reviewed all invoices supporting these totals and recommend payment. And we also have given you a list of payments over $10,000. Are there any questions on anything this morning?
Does that wind up 2021 pretty much?
Almost. We will have, I'm hoping, only possibly one more, maybe two. What I'm really waiting for is the remainder of the sales tax monies to come in, and once we get that sales tax money, we will utilize all of that to pay down TCD RS, and that will probably be the final payment of the year. And that will really carry us through another two years without any more big increases. And that will really carry us through another two years without any more big increases like we saw this year.
Do you recommend payment of both of these amounts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Commissioner Eagle.
To pay the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one amount and the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two amount as stated in the minutes. Do I hear second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next, Ms. Kidd.
The financial reports. We've received financial reports from the list. It's not up there yet. We've reviewed all these and recommend accepting these, these monthly reports. We are still working with TAC as they had an issue with their credit card company that caused them major problems. We're working on that. No fault of the tax assessor. She's been wonderful in trying to get this resolved and I believe it's on here to get a new company because of those issues.
Yes.
But other than that, we have no problems and recommend accepting these monthly reports.
Why is Constable in precinct two doesn't have a September report?
He does. It's below.
Amended August and then you've got September. You've got it also, correct? Yeah. You have two reports, one amended and then a September.
We're finally getting his reports more timely.
I see. Okay, I got it. All right, so you recommend approving?
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to accept the, approve the financial reports.
It was made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the financial reports.
Second.
Second has been made by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bless you.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay, now into miscellaneous, Ms. Carew. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve the amended order of the appointment of judges and alternate judges. You have provided the court with exhibit A with all of the names of the presiding judges and alternate judges, the early vote, the early vote board, and the central count station. Is that correct?
That's correct. So this is an amended list that, from the list that was provided back in August. And by the way, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. So when we sent out our appointment of letters to these judges, several of them came back and said they were unable to serve for the term of a year. I've been in talks with both party chairs. They've submitted a new list. There's a couple of changes under the presiding judge for First Baptist Church, the alternate judges at Saint Francis, and then Toller. And we also added an assistant tabulation supervisor.
We have a speaker.
I'm sorry?
We asked about the speaker.
The speaker.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Fisher, but you said, just in case there are any questions.
Only if there are questions.
Okay. So, is there any questions? Okay. Any further discussion? Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the amended order of the appointment of judges and alternate judges.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by, a motion was made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the presiding and alternate judges, the early vote, the early vote ballot board, the central count station, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carew. Okay, item number two. Discuss and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the request for the use of the courthouse parking lot for the Granbury Living Christmas Card twenty-twenty-one, December eighth through December eleventh. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. My name is Carrie Dyer. I lead the music over at Lakeside Baptist Church here in Granbury. And I'm also the creative director of the Granbury Living Christmas Cards. So let me be the first one to wish you all a Merry Christmas this year because we are knee-deep in Christmas stuff over at the church. We have enjoyed such a great relationship with both the county and the city over the years. This is our fifth year to stage the Living Christmas Cards. It's been a great event for our community to spread goodwill and hope, but also to bring visibility to our wonderful best-in-the-nation historic town square. We're asking for something a little different this year. We have been, set up a great opportunity through Visit Granbury and Ms. Dooley to do a spot on Good Morning Texas on the Friday morning of the Christmas Cards, which we think will be wonderful for our area and for our merchants and everything. They would like for us, for the spot on Friday morning, to have the cards set up Friday morning. Usually, we set the cards up all day Friday because our event starts Friday night. However, to set them up safely, as you can imagine, is a multi-phase project of setting up staging and securing it, setting up the cards themselves in a secure way so that they're safe in the wind, setting up a lot of rigging and lighting. So it's, it's a several hours process that takes the better part of a day. To have the cards set up on Friday morning for the Good Morning Texas spot, that would mean that we would need to have Thursday to actually set the cards up. So what I'm asking permission for today is to basically move our whole operation back a day and set up during the day on Thursday in the parking lot so that we're set up for that media appearance Friday morning and then for our event. So the inconvenience, to be honest, would be to tie up the parking one, one extra day than we usually do on the square because we need to have the parking emptied around the courthouse for us to set up those, those cards. So that's what we're proposing and asking today is to have the square, not just the tenth and eleventh, the days of the event, but also on the ninth to, to set that up properly, which would be sufficient time for us to get it set up.
You need the entire parking lot, all the north, the south, the east, and the west side?
Yes, sir. We, the cards are, are huge and we set up two on each side of the square, so.
The agenda item shows the whole parking lot, but it shows from December the eighth.
That's right. I think the December the eighth is because to have the parking lot clear by Thursday morning, we would have to put up the parking barriers and let people out on the evening at end of business on Wednesday.
Okay. So it's the eighth through the eleventh.
So the barricades would be set up then, what, like at five o'clock on Wednesday then? Is that what you?
I think that's what we've done in the past is, is to set them up or even, even, we would just basically Wednesday at the end of the business day, let people out of the courthouse parking and then not barricade it so that people would not come back in Wednesday night so that it would be clear Thursday morning.
So you've done that before in the past. We've done that five years with.
We've done that process, but it's usually been Thursday night to have it clear for Friday. So this would be moving it back one day, correct?
One, one extra day?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions or is there any discussion?
I guess Mr. Riley, our maintenance, is he normally out there helping coordinate that?
Right. We do coordinate with the city to put, bring out the barricades and the trash cans and all the good stuff, so.
Are you going to be singing?
I will be singing.
Good.
I'd invite all of you to do a solo this year if you'd like. Anybody?
No, you do the singing, I do the listening.
Have you talked to anybody with the, with the Granbury Merchants Association? Have they cleared this? This brings a lot.
Yes, sir. I, I have been in communication with them. They're, they're always favorable to, to what we do because we bring a lot of shoppers to the square and usually they'll stay up and late for our event. I haven't specifically told them about this day earlier thing, but I have been in communication with Mr. Hackett and he's been communicating with the merchants about our setup process. So I, I basically emailed all the merchants this past week and told them as soon as, as I have approval, I will let them know our whole setup process, the timeline of what it's going to be like that, that week so that there won't be any surprises for them.
Good, good. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, do I hear appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to authorize the county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the request for the use of the courthouse parking lot for the Granbury Living Christmas Cards, December the eighth through December the eleventh.
Second.
Seconded by you, Commissioner Andrews?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion has been made by Commissioner Cotton to authorize a county judge to sign the City of Granbury's event application approving the use of the courthouse parking lot from December eighth through December eleventh, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next, item three. Discuss and take appropriate action allowing the county judge to sign agreement for ambulance service between Hood County and Texas EMS. Mr. Ricky Reeves.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
So what we're asking the court to approve is an agreement for exclusive rights to nine-one-one dispatches for Hood County. We've been here since two thousand and one as your EMS provider. We plan on being here another twenty-one years. This gives us basically some security blanket to prevent somebody from coming in underneath and setting up shop and taking away some of the transports that we use to be able to fund our organization. We are a five oh one C. three nonprofit. The only revenue we get is from our transports and any donations we get. So losing any type of nine-one-one calls or any type of transfers, then that does impact our ability to be able to function as an EMS organization. So we, we have worked through the county, county attorney and through Commissioner One to be able to come up with an agreement that we think is amenable between the two of us. It gives us both some protection. So we ask that the county allow the judge to enter into the agreement. It's for a five-year contract, renew two years after that term if we keep it in force. There's a ninety-day clause to exit. There's also a couple of major issues that we can exit the contract if we don't meet some of the requirements, such as the time responses and other things. So it's a, it's a standard contract used throughout EMS in Texas through the county attorney. We've massage it to fit Hood County. And so I think the, the contract you have has been blessed through the county attorney.
Mr. Mills, you're sitting there in the back. You reviewed this contract and agree with what Mr. Reeves had stated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And Commissioner Andrews, you've worked on this with them also.
Yes, sir. And we're the only county that I could find that doesn't have any kind of a contracted service with their EMS provider. And I think that this is very, very beneficial for both the county and for, for Texas EMS and it makes a good relationship working forward. Any, EMS is, you are providing evidence of financial stability, financial.
Yes, sir.
Ability to do what you got to do. And you're also not going to, not going to refuse to transport somebody just because they can't pay.
Correct. And this also excludes pecan plantation unless they decide at some point in the future to no longer provide and then we've asked for the first broader refusal to include pecan. It does not impact the air medical services from operating as well. It just allows us to continue to do what we've done for twenty-one years.
So you've got mutual aid deal with pecan, don't you?
We have mutual aid with pecan, Somerville, E. Raff, and Parker County. We, we use them on average about two times a month, pecan comes out. They have some exclusive requirements for the gates of pecan, so we, we don't get to use them as much as we need them sometimes, but we mutual aid into them about four or five times a month. So it's a good relationship between the two of us to cover the community. We'll continue to do that. The contract allows us to kind of grow a little bit and add additional staff and, and equipment to be able to provide even better response times. As you know, our community's growing. We anticipate in five years it to really be impacted by the number of people moving into the county. So this allows us to be able to, to, to go into that extreme to cover those areas.
Do I hear a motion?
Yes, sir, Judge. I'd like to make the motion to allow, allow you, the judge, to sign the agreement for ambulance services between Hood County and Texas EMS.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner, what's your name over there? Commissioner Andrews for the county judge.
That's what he calls me.
Decide the agreement for ambulance service in Hood County and Texas EMS. Seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your good service to the county. We look forward to another twenty-one years.
All right, thank you. And I, I couldn't see your name and I couldn't remember.
Make sure we've got the right one up there.
Okay, item number four. Discuss and take appropriate action allowing the county judge to sign joint amendment number two to the master service agreement and inmate telephone service agreement. Good morning, Sheriff, and good morning, Eric. How are you?
Commissioners, how are you?
Good morning. GTL, Global Telelink has been, we've been their customer for lots of years. They've done us a great job and we've had a number of changes with the tablets coming in and things like that. Well, this change is because of the, an FCC issue. So maybe you could help explain that? Otherwise, well, I'll let you explain it unless you've got any questions.
Okay, please.
So, good morning. So this amendment is in, it's in direct response to an FCC order. So FCC has jurisdiction over interstate traffic, which includes inmate telephone calls, and they have imposed a new rate cap at twenty-one cents a minute. Hood County's current interstate rate or intrastate rate is thirty-nine cents a minute with, as you guys know, cell phones are, are replacing landlines. So we've, we've put a rate of twenty-one cents a minute on all inmate calls for Hood County jail, and that's an FCC order. This amendment is to reduce those rates to be compliant with FCC order. And actually, we are compliant with the order because these rates actually went into effect at twelve oh one this morning to be compliant with the order.
Okay. Well, this has put us in compliance. I think we need to do that. It's worked out well.
So this has been looked at by the county attorney. We had been getting thirty thousand dollars a year from them, so this will drop that down because of the less amount that they can charge, but the inmates pay for that. This is nothing that comes from the county. So you're going to get twenty thousand dollars a year and then bring everything in compliance with the FCC.
Okay. Mr. Mills, you've reviewed the contract, recommended us signing it?
We had some questions and so it went back and forth with the attorney, so.
So briefly, the sheriff and Eric had sent some information to me and there's, there's some confusion and tons and tons of papers to plow through. And one of the things that looked like was in there and they had forwarded to me was, does this apply to jails with under a thousand average daily capacity or average daily people there? And there's some parts of it that say yes and parts that say no, so I thought, okay, I'm confused. I'm just going to call the FCC line, okay? I called the FCC line. I'm on the phone for over twenty minutes. This woman has not a clue, was not helpful at all. I said, is there anybody who really knows this better than you? I don't know, sir. I mean, I, I got nothing out of it and so it was frustrating. And, and so I went back to the sheriff. I said, look, you know, y'all have been dealing with Global Telelink for a while and, you know, is this going to be okay? Obviously, it's going to be a benefit to the inmates and their family members because it's going to be less money for them. Obviously, it's a little hit for us with the money that we get, but I mean, ultimately, I want to be on the safe side with compliance and I was very frustrated with the FCC. So that was about as far as I got, but I did try to do the best I could to read through it, so I'm okay with this change.
Part of the deal and GTL helped me figure this out, that it's a, because of the cell phone system, you can be in New York City and call Granbury, Texas and doesn't really change anything, but so intrastate and interstate, that's the difference and so it gets kind of convoluted. But anyway, I agree with the way they're doing things, so.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to allow the county judge to sign the joint amendment number two to the master services agreement and inmate telephone services agreement.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Cotton to allow the county judge to sign the joint amendment number two to the telephone service agreement, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank all of you. Okay, item number five. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve order to authorize online education for county commissioners.
Yes, Judge. Week before last, I attended a, the ninety-ninth annual. Yes, Judge. A week before last, I attended the 99th Annual County Judges and Commissioners Association Conference down in Austin, around Rock, actually. And with COVID situation the way it's been, the legislature has come in and enacted a statutory provision where we can, the commissioners can actually get their, we have to have 15 hours a year of continuing education, and we can do those hours online if we pass this. And so it's recommended, I've drafted the resolution, I'm going to read it into the record, and then we can vote on it. And if we pass it, then it, we can save the county some money because we can sit at our desk and take some of the hours that were required. The Texas Bar Association, as you know, Judge, already allows that, that we, you know, we can take our extra continuing legal education online. So this is in line with that. So if I may, I'll read the order. Order to authorize online education for county commissioners. Whereas Texas Local Government Code, Section 81.002.5, as amended by the 87th Legislature, authorizes online instruction for commissioners' continuing education with the approval of the Commissioners Court, except for a county commissioner in the first 12-month period of the commissioner's first term. And whereas the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, wishes to authorize online instruction of commissioners' continuing education as permitted by statute, it is hereby ordered that the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, approves and authorizes online instruction for the continuing education of Hood County commissioners, except for a county commissioner in the first 12-month period of the commissioner's first term. And it is further ordered that a copy of this order shall be submitted to the Commissioners' Education Committee of the County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas, read and adopted by a vote on this day, 26th day of October 2021. And I'll make a motion to approve unless somebody's got questions.
What about the, you know, this is going to take the place of all attendance, or is this, you know, outside of the 12-month, you know, first term? The, you're proposing that all courses be done online rather than, you know, actual participation?
No, sir. It says that you have this option. You can, you can go, you can take all your hours in person if you want. This just gives you the option to do it either way, or a combination thereof. It's optional.
Well, there's, we've gone through COVID and a lot of off, online learning instead of in-person. I've heard things, advantages and disadvantages, disadvantages, people getting a good education by doing it online. Just some of the points that are the disadvantage is that a difficulty staying motivated, difficulty staying in contact with your instructors, difficult interacting with your peers, which I think is really a big thing that I think helps the commissioners. And it's difficulty staying connected at all times, difficulty getting immediate feedback while you're at conference, and difficulty completing all courses for a degree. I believe you can get lax if you're sitting in front of a computer for four days, which is what these conferences go, and stay focused. So I'm sure there's some pros, the costs. I think we have about, most of the commissioners have $2,500 in their budget for getting their 16 hours. So you'd still have to pay for the course. So that's probably about half of it. So you might be saving about $1,200. I don't think the, really the financial impact is a concern, but that's just my kind of, my thoughts on it, Judge.
So if I may address what your concerns are, one of the requirements of the online is that you have to, you have to actually sign up and get into a Zoom meeting where you can ask questions directly during the course. So it's just instead of sitting there in the audience asking, you're at your desk asking, and they're going to ask, there's going to be certain identifiers that pop up during the course that you have to deal with, or you're going to not get your hours. So again, this is not a mandate. This is an option. And again, if there are any other discussion, I'm open to it. And again, if the court votes no, then that's fine. I'll go spend the money and go down there and do it in person. I don't care.
Well, I think at least some interaction needs to be done. I wouldn't, you know, and if it's a pandemic, I mean, we all took courses online, and that's a, to have it in place that in the event of emergency, if something does happen again, I'd like the option to do it. But I think you, you learn a lot from speaking, I know I do, with the other county judges around. And so being in person really helps a lot. I would like to, I really do think it's important that if you can make it in person, you really should go in person. That's my feeling also. You learn a lot from just being with other commissioners, other county judges, talking, finding out what their problems are and how they solve them. I mean, I, I really do believe in that. I, so that's how I feel about it.
You know, I had to take a, I had to take an online class last December, and there was a little chat room there. You could interact a little bit. I very much value the in-face or in-person face-to-face meeting, but, you know, to have this as an option, I sure, I sure can't see any negatives in saying that, yeah, this is available to us. So I guess with that said, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Well, a motion been made by
Any speakers on this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Granik. Come on up.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I've had probably as much, many decades of the CME in the medical profession as, as the two attorneys have. My only suggestion is there are complications in proving that you're doing it. The Zoom helps doing it live. You can certainly fall asleep during CME, but I'd like to suggest that consider amending this to up to 50% of your CME time by computer. That means you would still have 50% that would be live, and you'd have the convenience of not having to be there all the time. Thank you.
So you just amended the legislation, in other words. That's your proposal?
What?
You just amended the Texas Legislature. Is that your proposal to, that half the 50%? Okay, thank you.
No, well, it doesn't say that you have to take it all. I mean, you just stated that you could, you could go online instruction if you want, or go to the course if you want. I think, Dr. Granik, you just said that you should take at least 50% in person and 50% online. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other questions? Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle to authorize online education for county commissioners, and that has been seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion fails three to two. Okay. Item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the mental health leave for peace officers' policies. H.R., how are you doing, Ms. Welborn?
Good morning. I believe everyone has seen Senate Bill 1359, and also you received a copy of this policy that's recommended. What I did, hopefully, is just take the guidelines out of Senate Bill 1359 implemented in this policy. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. If not, I'd appreciate you approving this policy so we can get it implemented in our handbook. This has been reviewed by our county attorney.
Mr. Mills has reviewed it?
Yes, sir.
You've been busy this last two weeks, haven't you, Mr. Mills? I like putting Mr. Mills on the spot. It's always nothing like for, since so that if any possible thing goes wrong, it's Mr. Mills' fault, right? We've run our best on the thing.
He's the one I fall back on, for sure.
Sorry, Mr. Mills. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or any discussions? Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, sir. I will move that we approve the revision to the Hood County Court Policies and Procedures for Mental Health Leave for Peace Officers.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the mental health leave for peace officers' policy, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welborn. Item number seven, consider and take appropriate action to approve the sheriff and EM to purchase and have installed a generator from Tubasing Solutions LLC for backup power to be supplied to the new dispatch radio repeaters installed on the Amud Water Tower in Pecan Plantation, not to exceed $52,396 from Fund 83. Sheriff and Jay Webster.
Judge, Commissioners, we got, two weeks ago, we ordered the, or got the court to approve the dispatch radios for fire and law enforcement to put out there. But to keep it running, we'd like to have a generator to make sure it stays running, and it'll also help the equipment that's already there. So, did you?
Okay.
So anyway, we would appreciate the quote that Jay has got is $52,396. It's a heavy-duty generator installed from two, I can't even say the name of the company, but Tubasing.
Tubing sing, Tubi sing.
Tubi sing.
Tubi sing.
So it's a heavy-duty generator to run quite a bit of equipment. So it's, it's bigger than the ones we have at, at our two towers on Diamond A and Pleasant Court.
But you do have backup generators at those sites also.
Oh, yes. We've had them out there for at least 15, 16 years.
Yep. Okay.
Who maintains those? Who maintains the generators?
Well, the ones at the other two towers are maintained by Hood County Maintenance. This one, we kind of talked about different ways to have, have it so they can have the electronics have changed over the years to alert them when there's a problem. But it'll be, I guess, Hood County Maintenance that'll be taking care of any problems that might come up.
And you?
To finish answering that question, it's, for right now, we'll have a three-year agreement with Tubasing to do this one. They also do help us with the one at the EOC, because I got the information from Jay Riley on how we were doing our generators to make sure that the quote fit with what Glenn needed as well.
I forgot that one.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got something. So this Fund 83, is this American Rescue Act money? So I was at the Commissioners' County Judge Conference a week and a half ago, as I said earlier. And it turns out that I met with a, they had, we actually had a module on the American Rescue Act money, and this is, I just want to give you all a preview, that I'm going to bring in a workshop in here. And we're, I'm going to bring in a TAC representative and a judge, a county judge that's handling $500 million American Rescue Act money, to come in here and educate us on the do's and don'ts of the American Rescue Act. And so just want to let you know, hope that everybody can attend, so we can get the facts on what the, what we can and cannot do with the American Rescue Act funds. With that said, I don't see a problem with this.
Hey, do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion then to authorize, let me get the right one here, to take appropriate action to approve the sheriff and emergency management to purchase and have installed a generator from Tubing Sing Solutions for backup power to be supplied to the new dispatch radio repeaters installed on the Amud Water Tower in Pecan Plantation, not to exceed $52,396, and paying for that out of Fund 83, which is the rescue money.
Well, you're second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to allow the purchase and installation of a generator from Tubasing Solutions to the Amud Water Tower in Pecan Plantation, not to exceed $52,396, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number eight, consider and take appropriate action to award RFB 2021-0112 bottled water and services to Blue Triton Brands, Inc. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. These bids, 2021-12 was open on October 18th at 10:00 a.m. in the purchasing department. There were two qualified responses from our current vendor, Blue Triton, also known as Ready Refresh, and from DS Services of America, also known as Primo Water North America. The vendor with the lowest bid was Blue Triton at $4.39 per 5-gallon bottle and $2.19 per dispenser. This bid is 8% and 26% less, respectively, than our current contract that we have. Now, Blue Triton is, is having delivery issues, billing issues due to staffing problems, like everyone, everyone else is. But the other vendor had similar issues when we contracted with them in the past. So despite these problems due to the lower cost, significantly lower cost, purchasing recommends that the contract be awarded to Blue Triton.
Any further questions or discussion? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve, or award the RFB 2021-012 bottled water and service to Blue Triton Brands, Inc.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to award the bottled water services to Blue Triton, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Okay. What else do you have there for us? Another one?
Yes, sir.
All right. Consider and take appropriate action if the county judge signed the AGCM proposal titled Task Order Number One. Cost is $5,000 each for volunteer fire department facility assessments to be paid from Fund 55. We have both the purchasing agent Glenn Tillman and our fire marshal, Jeff Young.
Yes. This, this is a proposal from AGCM, basically to do in-depth evaluations of the volunteer fire departments, basically to have, have them look and see what is there, what's the condition and life expectancy of the existing facilities, what would it cost to bring them up to modern standards, and also what would, what upgrades do they feel are needed to, you know, carry us into the future a little ways, and what the cost of those upgrades would be. It's a very detailed analysis, and 5,000 each is the cost. And I'll turn it over to Jay if you have.
I just came up here in case there was any questions.
You and I had that conversation the other day, and I think you brought it up that we weren't going to do all nine.
Correct. So there, there's one department that's already got land and plans to build a new station. So I don't see any point in spending $5,000 to do an evaluation on a building they're going to abandon. So that was one. The chief of Granbury said that he'd, he'd rather not do the Granbury stations, just so we're not trying to cross pollinate politics and everything else. He said it'd probably be a bigger mess for us to go in there and evaluate their buildings and make suggestions to changes than it would be to just ask the city to make the adjustments. So there are a couple of departments that we're not looking at. In the case of Lipan, I believe there's two buildings, so I don't know if it's going to be $5,000 for each building, because they have one on either side of the highway, or if we're doing it as $5,000 for Lipan Fire Department. So that's some stuff we were going to clear up with AGCM to see if that evaluation is per building or per department. But either way, we're not doing any of the stations for Granbury. We're not doing any in Harbors. So that leaves you, what, seven buildings, I think?
Or maybe eight, if you have to do two for Lipan.
Well, I think the seven would include the two at Lipan.
Okay.
Well, we already discussed that this is what we needed to do, that we needed to do this first, so that we could decide what we are going to do and what they do need it, so I think we had.
Now, this is, yeah, it's definitely something that we've been talking about, where we're looking at moving forward with purchasing some tankers and getting some more equipment. A lot of these departments are pretty well maxed out in the buildings they're in, they're kind of busting at the seam, and one of the things that we looked at doing was extending or adding on a bay for additional equipment, and then look at putting sleeping quarters and stuff like that.
Right, and you were right, correct, it would be eight if we did two buildings at Lipan.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Nine if you'd only do one Lipan, seven if you.
Seven if they only charge us one for Lipan, eight if they charge us for both buildings.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
But yeah, so basically, that's their thirty-thousand-foot view, they're coming in to give us the assessment on what we have to physically work with at each department.
Okay, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to have, allow you to sign the proposal from AG Construction Management, Task Order Number One, it costs five thousand dollars for each VFD facility assessment, to be paid out of Fund fifty-five.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Andrews has made a motion for the county judge to sign the AGCM proposal, Task Number Order One, at five thousand dollars each, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number ten, discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program, year twenty-twenty-two, for the Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for the Hood County Center. Ms. Jeanette, that does a wonderful job at Senior Citizen, doesn't she?
Good morning.
Everybody that's been there sees that, and the food is very good there, too. I mean, you do a great job, Jeanette. So what do you have to say?
We are applying for our annual grant with Texas Feeding Texans, and part of that application needs a resolution from the county commissioners, showing that the county also supports us.
And so, what was it, Ms. Kidd and I were talking about the amount, and it was decided that two-hundred thousand was the appropriate amount to fill in.
That's what Mr. Webster has included in these notes for charitable organizations for this year.
Okay.
Okay.
So hopefully, we're going to get that grant money back also from the Texas, the way I kind of read it, doesn't it? So the bigger the number, the better chance we have of getting more money, too.
Right, part of the grant process is that if the county matches their funds, then it makes us eligible for their funds.
I think this is a wonderful program, and if anybody out there would ever like to feel fortunate about themselves, all you have to do is go deliver some of those meals on wheels, and you'll come back saying, I have it pretty good, so some of these people out there have it pretty bad, don't they miss fate? So anyway, this is a good program, so do I hear an appropriate motion, please?
I move that we authorize the county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program for year twenty-twenty-two for the Texas Department of Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for the Hood County Senior Center.
Your second.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson has made the appropriate motion for the county judge to sign the resolution approving the county grant program for the Meals on Wheels program, second by Commissioner Andrews. That amount's going to be an amount of two-hundred thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for the great job that you do. I'll be eating with you next week.
All right, great, thank you.
Why do you charge three dollars, but you'll accept ten? You can overpay for lunch, can't you? It's that good, dude.
It's a three dollar and fifty cent donation, so.
That's right, but you can donate more.
You can donate whatever you want.
Okay, that's it, that's what I was, thank you very much.
Right.
Okay, okay, the next item. Discuss and take appropriate action allowing the county judge to sign the ACH Processing Services Agreement between the Hood County Tax Assessor Collector and Certified Payments. We got the heavy guns now from the tax collector's office here. Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners. We apologize, Andrea had emergency dental surgery today, so she couldn't be here, so I'm here in her absence. We're asking to be able to get approval to change our credit card company, due to we've had some major issues with our previous credit card company in the past. The new credit card company has better reporting, better communications for the customer, they can have digital receipts if there's an issue with their credit cards, we can void and reimburse that customer immediately, we don't have to wait seventy-two hours to try to get that done. The reporting for our end and the bookkeeper's side is much more legible and easier to understand and work through when they're trying to do their end-of-month accounting. It takes a lot of the batching off of the clerks, for them to have to do it at the end of the night, and it puts it more towards the supervisors and the bookkeeper. It can store, it can store data for up to five years if needed. It uses less, it uses less paper for the receipts, since they can get those digital, they can get those emailed, text messaged, it's hooked straight into our RTS state system. So it's not a separate, it's not a separate machine, so if the internet on the phone line goes down, the credit card machine's not going to go down, we can still take care of the customer and get their transactions done.
We can store the customer's phone number and call them if there was a problem with their card right away.
So what you're saying is that there are just a lot of distinct advantages in going with this new credit card clearing company here, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
And it's a lot cheaper, the minimum percentage for the customer, it used to be three dollars, anything over, what was it, one thirteen, a hundred and thirteen dollars, it would be more than three-dollar fee. This fee is only like a dollar fee for the customer.
Yeah, and it's changed the percentage rate. The old percentage rate with the previous company was two-point-six-five percent to the customer, the new percentage rate is two-point-three percent to the customer after it goes over that limit. So, and it changes the minimum to a dollar per transaction instead of three dollars.
Well, if this is not a scam, this is a real good deal, right?
Yeah, it's really, it's really good.
All right, good.
Sure Mr. Mills has read the contract.
Yeah, Mr. Mills, this is another contract that you've approved, isn't it?
Got to get, I'm going to pick on it.
It's only been six so far. Have you been, have you had time this last two weeks to try any cases?
Yes, y'all can correct me if I'm talking out of turn, so last week was busy for me. My wife had a baby, and I was like a one-armed paper hanger trying to keep up with everything. So Andy had sent me the contract on Monday or Tuesday, and I got back with her right around lunchtime on Friday with just a couple of real minor things, and then she sent that off to the, their end, the Certified Payments, and I don't know, I don't think we have the final cleaned-up version, which, that's unfortunate, but it's really minor, just some technical little discrepancies about thirty-day notice versus sixty-day notice in one part and things like that, so it's nothing major. What I would recommend, if it's okay with the court, would be just approve it contingent on her approval and mine, when we get the cleaned-up version in, again, it's not a big deal, and, you know, you got to pass it to see what's in it anyway, so. But we do things up here. Yeah, okay, all right, so y'all have any questions? Okay, thanks.
I'd just like to say I'm anxious to move forward with the new company, very.
And talking to Andy, I.
Very, 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 very.
From what y'all said, the problems you have and this.
Yeah, she felt that, too, she said this will be a very welcome change.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to allow you to sign the ACH Processing Services Agreement between Hood County Tax Assessor Collector and Certified Payments, contingent on the changes in the contract being approved by the county attorney and the tax assessor collector.
Second. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to allow the county judge to sign the ACH Processing Services Agreement between the Hood County Tax Assessor Collector and Certified Payments, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, item number twelve, discuss and take appropriate action to execute engineer's contract for the CDBG project. Environmental, there's.
How about AMUD?
How about AMUD up here? Come on up here.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners.
Good morning.
I think you've got in your packet a copy of the resolution that was adopted in December twenty-eighteen, selecting Improtect, Hibbs, and Todd as engineers for this project. Basically, we just need to go ahead and get the engineering services agreement executed, which is, and it pretty much, well, it absolutely reflects what's in the grant application to begin with, so there's no changes with that. They have been working on the project, but we need to go ahead and, at some point, start getting them paid for the work they're doing, so.
Copy of the resolution, but it's already been signed, hasn't it?
The resolution has, not the engineering services agreement.
Okay, I got you.
Coming in that.
So is the county, you're going to have to re-educate me on this one, is the county on the hook for this forty thousand dollars?
No.
I think, I think we talked about it.
Right.
We've already been, talked about all this, correct?
You know, through inter-local, intergovernmental, well, inter-local agreements and everything, AMUD's, any, any funds or expenses outside the scope of the grant itself belongs to AMUD. We'll cover anything, any extraneous expenses beyond that, so no, you're not, you're not on the hook for anything.
And then this is just for this Port Ridgely East project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I'll make the motion then to take appropriate action to execute, I guess we'll prove, to execute the engineer's contract for the CDBG project.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to execute the engineer's contract for the CDBG project, second by Commissioner Wilson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, next, discuss and take appropriate action regarding TDA Section Three presentation is required by TXCD, CDBG, item number seven-two-two-zero-one-nine-one. I'm glad you're up here, Mr. English.
Well, I was kind of hoping our grant administrator would be plugged into this particular meeting, because he's the one with all the in-depth information with regard to it, but basically, what this amounts to, and it is a requirement of project funding, that basically we reach out to Section Three workers, which are lower-income workers, to give them an opportunity to work on the project in different capacities, so that's essentially, and basically, you know, the PowerPoint that I'm sure you probably have, it points out where individuals and businesses can log on and get registered as qualifying under Section Three.
Yep.
You recommend this.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the TDA Section Three presentation as required by the TXCDBG, number seven-two-two-zero-one-nine-one.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the TDA Section Three presentation is required by TXCDBG, second by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Judge Commissioner.
All right, thank you, Mr. English, appreciate you coming in. Item number fourteen, discuss and take appropriate action to execute the Hood County Animal Restraint and Rabies Control Order. If it has anything to do with animals, we know that it will involve Kelly. Don't we, Sheriff?
Yeah, I'm just up here for moral support, but she's the expert that knows everything, so they updated the order, and she's going to.
Good. Okay.
So to update the order, it was past due, it was past due, the last time it was updated was in two thousand and six, and so after review and revisions, updates, and we did omit some items, we wanted to bring it to the Commissioners' Court for the approval to update the animal orders and rabies.
Any big changes?
One big change is the dangerous dog, so in the past, when a dog attacks another animal, I was not able to deem the dog dangerous, and they would receive a citation for their dog not being restrained, and then maybe a second violation for their dog not being currently vaccinated. And recently, we've seen an uprising in dogs getting loose and attacking other dogs, and ultimately, the injuries are killing them, and it's very upsetting, and those owners need to be held responsible, they need to be held to a higher standard, and with you approving this order, I will be able to deem the dog dangerous, and under that state law, deeming a dog dangerous for an attack or, it's in there, unprovoked attack on a person, now we've added an unprovoked attack on an animal, and so they will have to follow the same guidelines and requirements as if their dog attacked a person, and those requirements are very steep, and, but they need to be held responsible, because it's not, it's not, it's not okay, because our dogs and our animals are like our family.
So you're recommending, in your knowledge and experience and training, you think this is a good?
Absolutely, yes.
Absolutely, okay.
County attorney has worked with Cath, worked with them on this order anyway, so they've talked about it, and he's the one that got you to put it on the agenda, so.
Good.
It's all good.
Good job, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Real great job. She's a good addition to your department, Sheriff, isn't she? Talking about Kelly McNabb.
Yeah, over the years, there's been a lot, lot going on, and Kelly takes care of a lot of problems, working with the animals, with the people, with employees, with everybody, so I have less headaches, which that means you guys got less headaches, too, so she does a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
I've got one question, Judge, so under this dangerous dogs, I just want to, it refers to Health and Safety Code eight-twenty-two, and that lays out the elements that you need to establish to declare that dog a dangerous dog?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to take action to execute the Hood County Animal Restraint and Rabies Control Order.
Second. By Commissioner Cotton, for the county judge, I guess, to execute the Hood County Animal Restraint.
I think all the Commissioners have to sign it.
Oh, we have to all sign it?
Yeah.
Good, okay, and second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, or five to zero. Thank you, Ms. McNabb.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
All right. Item number fifteen, discuss and take appropriate action regarding fire department. Item number 15, discuss and take appropriate action regarding fire department interlocal agreement amendment, may convene into executive session. Yes, sir. Chief Fire Marshal Jeff Young.
Judge and Commissioners, again, not to leave Mr. Mills out of anything, I've run some stuff by him on this as well, the language of the amendment to the contract, I've also called and asked him if we needed to do any kind of cancellation on the previous contract, being as how they had one signed for the 1st of October, and he basically told me that if we agree to this one and sign this one, then this one would supersede that one, and they didn't necessarily need to have a removal of the previous contract. So it's basically just some language change at the suggestion of the auditor, and some of the chiefs had some input, so I think everybody's agreeable on it, and it, they're all good with it, if you are.
Just to be clear, what it is, is going to be required of the volunteer, make sure I have it straight on it, the volunteer fire departments to create their own, a separate bank account for the subsidy from the county.
Correct.
Okay. That was the only change.
Correct. So it, basically, they're creating an account for all the county subsidy money that is auditable, they're going to turn in invoices and bank statements from that account to the auditor so that that can all be watched.
That's good. Okay, so do we have to make a motion here to approve this amendment to the contract then, don't we?
Yes, sir, and I would require all of your signatures once again.
Do I hear an appropriate motion to amend the interlocal agreements with the fire departments?
Yes, sir Judge, I'll make that motion.
Second. By Commissioner Will, Andrews.
One, just one.
Why do I have?
Judge, get him some coffee.
I'm not just, I'm not just picking on Commissioner Andrews down there, he just.
Seconded by Eagle.
To execute the.
That was seconded by Commissioner Eagle, I was just helping you out.
Yeah. I appreciate that, and you're fired.
Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, sir.
Yes, sir.
And you're fired, he said.
Motion, but to execute the amendment, contract has been made by Commissioner Andrews, second by Commissioner Eagle, and you're on thin ice. That motion here, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously five zero.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Doing a great job.